Linfield Town Meeting will come to order. Always wanted to do that. My name is Joe Mark. I'm your new moderator. I know I'm young, but thank you. Please bear with me tonight. This is my first time running town meeting. I've been an avid participant, but, you know, just please bear with me and I appreciate your courtesy. I ask you to please silent and silence your cellphones and put them on vibrant so that they don't disrupt our meeting tonight. I want to thank everyone for coming. The following non-voters and non-resident officials and department heads have asked to be admitted to the town meeting tonight and be allowed to respond to questions and speak on issues that are before the town meeting this evening. Without objection, they may be seated: Town Administrator Rob Dolan, Assistant Town Administrator Robert Curtin, Town Council Tom Mullen, Town Clerk Trudy Reed, Superintendent of Schools Mrs. Jane Tremblay, Department of Public Works Director John Tomas, Lyndon Nakara of the Senior Center, Library Director Jenny Glace. Without objection, they may be seated. The following non-residents have asked to be admitted to town meeting without objection, they may be seated in the area to my left in the non-voting seating area: Daniel Thomasello of the Linfield Villager, Julie McCarthy, Town Accountant, Claire Smith, Wareham Town Official, Michelle Bisanti, Town Clerk Wareham, Alvin Silva, Wareham Town Selectmen, Charles Richter, Town Engineer, Pat Kelly, Linfield Public Library, Kristen McCray, Linfield Board of Health, Joel Frisch, Heather Monica, Scott Cameron, Lyndon Nakara, and... Without objection, they may be seated. To the constables of the Town of Linfield and the County of Essex, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Linfield, the qualified voters, to vote in the election and town affairs to meet in the middle school auditorium and in the gymnasium if necessary on Monday, April 29, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Then and there to act on the following articles. Without objection, I will dispense with the reading of the warrant and service. I hold in my hand the warrant for the town meeting, including the return of service, from Town Clerk Trudy Reed. As a proud son of Linfield, I'm honored to run town meeting tonight. For anyone who is new, town meeting is the purest form of democracy in America today, where residents come to legislate the town's business in an open forum. There are a lot of rules pertaining to town meeting, but you will find a synopsis, a procedure in your yellow warrant booklet on the front page, and an updated version in the white packet titled Town Meeting Handout. Please do not be baffled by Robert's Rules of Order. If you have a question tonight, please ask it. That's what we're here to do: facilitate debate and help you. To go over some of the common rules: Please wait for the microphone before you speak tonight. Please give your name and address prior to speaking. Speakers are allowed three minutes to speak to an article or motions. Town meeting can amend that at any time. Anyone can amend a motion by changing the wording or amending the dollar amount of the motion. I ask if you have a complicated motion, you please bring a copy down to us or email it to linfieldtm@gmail.com. Finally, I want you to please place close attention to a new rule I'm going to be implementing for the first time tonight. You'll find this new rule on page seven in the supplemental Town Meeting Packet. This rule, Rule 10. I'll wait for everyone to turn to that page. It's the Town Meeting Handout Packet. So, I'd ask you to please turn to page seven. You'll find a new rule on the page seven. Rule 10 is referencing to transparency at town meeting. I believe that speakers should disclose if they have a current financial interest in an article they are speaking to. The new rule reads: "Any person who has a financial interest in an article under discussion shall make a disclosure of that interest before speaking." The definition of financial interest being "a benefit of gaining or losing personal monetary value from a decision on an article." Now, the employment, whether paid or unpaid, of any person acting for a person interested in an article under discussion shall make a disclosure. An example of that being a real estate agent acting for a developer speaking at town meeting. They would simply have to say, "I'm so-and-so. I'm speaking for the developer that has this project which has an article." Also, being in a butter to a proposed project in an article constitutes having a financial interest. You will find the definition of a butter in the packet. Violation of such disclosure or refusal to disclose is on the honor system tonight. I believe that we live in a courteous and civil town, and participants at town meeting will abide by the rules presented here tonight. Just to clarify before we move on, disclosure is not generally required if you're a beneficiary of town services such as public safety, public works, or if your child lives in the school system, or if you're just a taxpayer. Are there any questions? For those of you who are new to town meeting, receive the clicker. There's two buttons on the clicker even. It's a simple, I can figure it out. You have A1, which will be used to vote yes on articles, and you have 2B, which will be used to vote no on articles. Do I need to explain anything else with electronic voting? Before we start town meeting, the people before you and below you have devoted thousands of hours to present a budget and warrant to ensure our town's business is conducted with integrity and honor. We owe them a round of applause for their hard work. It's also important to recognize those who have left town service and are new to joining us. Former school committee woman Dorothy Presser has served on the school committee for 21 years. Let's thank Mrs. Presser for her commitment and service to the town. Former town moderator Arthur Bork, who's not here tonight, he's actually watching from Florida. We owe him a round of applause for leading town meeting with integrity and honor. Joining us tonight, we have two new elected officials: Planning Board Member Tom Wallace, as well as newly-elected school committee woman Stacy Dawson. Congratulations to both of them. Bob, can you hear us from the gymnasium?
Bob, you there?
Yes, I had to walk over to the microphone.
Sounds good to me. I would now ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Without objection, Mr. Thomas Grillo and Angus Bruce will be admitted to the meeting. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. We're going to obviously try to get through this in one night, but if we don't, I have a motion that I move that if necessary, this annual meeting be adjourned to Monday, May 6, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the middle school auditorium, gymnasium, and cafeteria if need be, should the business of the meeting not be completed.
I'll second that motion.
Callers in favor?
Article 1, to act on reports of town officers and special committees as published. Mr. Barrett?
I move to accept the reports of town officers and special committees as published.
Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded to accept the reports of town officers and special committees as published. Is there any debate on this article? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Polling will now be open. You have 10 seconds. Article 1 passes by majority. Article 2, to choose all town officers not required to be chosen by ballot: three field drivers, one pound keeper, and three wood measurers. Mr. Dalton?
I move that the town vote to choose all town officers not required to be chosen by ballot as follows: Robert McKendrick, John Pocurrit, Betty Adelson as field drivers, David Crockett as pound keeper, and Kenneth Burnham, John Pocurrit, and Robert McKendrick as wood measurers.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to choose all town officers not required to be chosen by ballot as follows: Robert McKendrick, John Pocurrit, and Betty Adelson as field drivers, David Crockett as pound keeper, and Kenneth Burnham, John Pocurt, Robert McKendrick as wood measurers. Is there any debate on this article? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Polling will be open for 10 seconds. Article 2 passes by majority. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to fix the compensation of each elected officer of the town is required by general laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to fix the compensation of each of the elected offices of the town as required by general laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended as follows: Board of Selectmen, Chairman, $850, and Members, $700. Board of Assessors, Chairman, $4100, and Member, $3550.
Second that motion.
It's been moved, Article 3 has been moved and seconded, that the town vote to fix the compensation of each elected officer of the town as required by general laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended as follows: Board of Selectmen, Chairman, $850, and Members, $700. Board of Assessors, Chairman, $4100, and Member, $3550. Is there any debate on Article 3? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 3. Polling will now be open for 10 seconds. Article 3 passes by majority. Jessica, do you mind slowing the slides down so Trudy can record the votes, please? Thank you. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds sums of money to supplement certain accounts in current 2019 fiscal year where balances are below projected expenditures for various reasons, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Barrett?
I move that the town vote to appropriate $11,446 from free cash and transfer from existing fiscal year 2019 appropriation accounts. The sums listed on page 2 of the handout booklet under the heading Article 4 to the accounts listed in said handout in order to balance the fiscal year 2019 budget.
Second that motion.
Article 4 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $11,446 from free cash and transfer from existing fiscal year 2019 appropriation accounts. The sums listed on page 2 of the handout booklet under the heading Article 4 to the accounts listed in said handout in order to balance the FY19 budget. Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 4.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 4.
Is there any debate on this article? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 4. Polling will now be open for 10 seconds. The yeses have, and Article 4 passes by majority. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or appropriate by transfer from available funds sums of money to pay overdue bills of prior fiscal year or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Dalton?
I move that the town vote to appropriate $48,932.73 from free cash for the payment of overdue bills as listed on page 3 of the handout booklet under the heading Article 5.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $48,932.73 from free cash for the payment of overdue bills as listed on page 3 of the handout booklet under the article 5.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McKendrick?
Yes, I've had a request here. Wouldn't you come down to the vote, would you say, "Okay, please vote now when the time starts"?
I will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. This vote requires, this article requires a four-fifths vote to be passed. Can a runner please bring him a microphone, please?
Wallace, Wallace McKenzie for Devston Lane.
Welcome.
Okay. Can somebody answer whether the $36,000 payment to John Lynch, PC, was for the town defense of the four appellate tax board cases filed by National Development that resulted in the $5 million reduction in the assessment of Market Street and the refund of $102,000? Thank you.
Mr., geez, I can't remember the town administrator's name.
As long as these three do, I'm fine. Yes, the answer to your question is yes, it is. Its legal fees are related to the Market Street appellate tax board matter.
That answer your question? Perfect. Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 5.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends Article 5.
Is there any further discussion on Article 5? Seeing and hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Voting is now open for Article 5. You have 10 seconds.
Mr. Moderator?
You're recognized.
We have a concern regarding some of the voting devices not lighting up. Can we pause for a moment and check that?
Yes, I'll confer with the town clerk. Article 5 passed by the four-fifths requirement.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McKendrick?
Yeah, I've had a request. Could you tell us what the number of people here are tonight that have checked in already?
One moment, Mr. McKendrick.
Okay, thank you.
The number is 485, Mr. McKendrick.
Okay, 485. Thank you very much.
We're now going to proceed to audit the system and do a test on it. I'm going to ask the, we're going to put a slide up on the screen, and I'm going to ask you to press, Jessica, is it A1? Or 1A? We're going to do 2B. So I'd ask, it's online tonight, I guess. So I'd ask you now to, polling is open, and I'd ask you to please press 2B. Polling is now open. Jessica, can we do it one more time? I apologize. I just want to make sure everyone's counted. Are we all set to open it? We're all set to open voting now. I'd ask that you please press 2B again. Polling is now open.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McKendrick?
Yes, we've had a request. Is there a way to separate this out to make sure that the auditor, the gymnasium is actually being recorded? I mean, it seems like it is, but if we just did the, well, I don't know, that won't work either. But that's the request anyway.
Our town clerk's working on it. There's two sets of clickers that were given out tonight. One set was for the auditorium, and one set was for the gymnasium. So if, just bear with me for one second. So I'd ask you to please bear with us, real quick. If I can have your attention, please. So we're going to vote, open up polling again one more time to audit the system, and if your clicker is not lighting up after you vote, please raise your hand. So when the 10 seconds comes up, polling will be open. Now, vote now. So please, if you're having any issues, please put your hand up. Mr. McKendrick, is anyone having any problems over there?
We're checking on it. Is the light supposed to be green or red when it lights up?
Green.
Okay, how come mine's red?
Because you're an exceptional guy. If you have a problem with your clicker, could you please stand up? Bob, are there any more issues in the gymnasium?
Yes.
Is there someone helping you in there from turning technology?
Yes.
I apologize for this inconvenience. Unfortunately, when you were handed a clicker tonight, there was two kinds of clickers, one for the gymnasium and one for the auditorium. So, in the interest of efficiency... one for the gymnasium and one for the auditorium, so in the interest of efficiency. I mean, by all means, if you want to stay in the auditorium and have your vote not counted, you can stay here, but I would hope that you would want your vote counted. Maybe you can change rooms and see if your clicker works. Mr. McKendrick, how are we doing over there?
We're working on it.
Thank you.
I think we got it pretty much straightened out. Several of them were on the wrong channel, apparently. If it lights up green, you're on the right channel.
Correct.
We all set back there? Nobody else has a problem? All right, Mr. Moderator, I believe we're golden.
Just please bear with us one more minute. We're going to, I believe we should take a new vote on Article 5. Just wait one minute while Jessica gets us set up. You can just disregard what's on the screen right now.
Mr. Moderator, are we going to do a test before we vote on this Article 5?
I guess we're going to, we're going to go with the test again. Polling will open when the ten-second mark, vote please. 2B. Jessica, if you can. So now that we've done a test, what we're going to do is, we're going to open voting for twenty seconds instead of ten seconds now. So once the new slide comes up, voting will be open, when you see in the green light. So now we'll proceed to a vote on Article 5 once the slide presents itself. Voting is now open. Oh. It's still open. Jessica, can we now proceed to Article 5? Thank you. Voting, voting is now open on Article 5.
Is it now open?
It's now open. Article 5 passes by four fifths. Moving on to Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or appropriate by transfer from available funds or otherwise, a sum of money for the necessary town charges and expenses, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate, and appropriate by transfer the sum of fifty-six million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars for the necessary town charges and expenses, as presented by the Board of Selectmen and as shown in the Finance Committee report beginning on page seven thereof.
Second that motion.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate, and appropriate by transfer, the sum of five, fifty-six million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars for the necessary town charges and expenses, as presented by the Board of Selectmen, and as shown in the Finance Committee report beginning on page seven thereof. Recommendation for Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 6.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 6.
So if you're new to town meeting, how we go about passing the budget in your annual town meetings, we go line by line. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to call out line one to line twenty-seven. And if there's any discussion on that, on those line items, we can stop, debate the line items, and then we'll proceed. Does any, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Prospero. Can I get a runner for a microphone, please, down front?
Thank you. Bob Prospero, Six Chair and Cross. On page seven, I would just like to know why our free cash was reduced by that much. Could somebody give me an idea what happened there? And also, is it prudent to reduce our free cash by that much in one year?
Mr. Dolan?
Sorry, thank you. The reduction of free cash is appropriated in this historic. The eight-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-sixteen represents the capital budget. I'm sorry, the reduction in, are you talking about the reduction from nineteen, nineteen to twenty, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, the eight-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, yes, we're spending less money in FY twenty. I'm sorry, I had the wrong line.
Okay, thank you.
Line items one through twenty-six. Line items twenty-seven through forty-eight. Line items forty-nine through sixty-six. Mr. Lacorze, can I get a runner with a microphone, please, down the front?
Thank you. Harry Lacorze, Patridge Lane.
Harry, can you speak up, please?
Harry?
Just hold it closer to you.
Thank you very much. I'm talking about Article, item number fifty, sir. Other salaries on the police budget, public safety budget. And if Chief Green is in the audience, I would like to raise a question to him. Thank you, Chief. I'm concerned about the police budget with respect to, in the papers, in the weekly papers. In the weekly papers, you find calls being made for alarms. And frequently, maybe as many as ten fifteen a week. And police patrolmen and/or vehicles are sent over to those people to check on the alarm systems. What is the policy of the police department with respect to repeated alarms from the same location?
Chief Green?
Good evening, Harry, good to see you.
Nice to see you, Dave.
We allow three false alarms. After the third false alarm, we start to charge them twenty-five dollars. And then subsequent to that, this higher fees, it graduates as the amount of false alarms increase. We collect that money. We do bill them and we collect that, and Julie McCarthy handles that and goes into the general fund.
That goes to the general fund?
It does.
What is the three times time lag? In what period of time can they have three year violations?
In one-year period.
One-year fiscal? Calendar. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Please wait for the microphone. Your name and address.
Sure, residential.
Mr. Dolan?
It's both, sir.
Is there any further debate on line items forty-nine and sixty-six? We'll move on to line items sixty-seven through eighty-one. We'll move on to line items eighty-two through ninety-seven. Mr. Lacorze, can you get a runner up in the front for a microphone?
How am I coming through, all right?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Harry Lacorze, Patridge Lane. I move that we increase line item eighty-three expenses, Board of Health, from forty thousand, three hundred and four dollars to forty-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars. An increase of two thousand dollars respectfully request a second. Thank you.
Mr. Lacorze, do you have a copy of that motion? I didn't.
No, but I'll repeat it for your clerk. It's very simple. I move we increase line eighty-three expenses, Board of Health, from forty thousand, three oh four to forty-two thousand, three oh four. That's an increase of two thousand dollars.
It's been, I'll recognize you once, once, give me a second. It's been moved and seconded to increase line item eighty-three to forty-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars.
That's correct.
Mr. Lacorze, you can be recognized to speak on your motion.
Thank you. I want to jumpstart the air quality system testing in Lynnfield, primarily at Marketplace, Salem Street, Walnut Streets, and possibly Route 128. I have been a resident of Lynnfield for fifty-seven years. I've served on many town boards and committees. I moved here in nineteen sixty-two from Everett to avoid traffic lights in the Monsanto Chemicals Mark. And ought to dwell in the, what do you call it, pastoral sound of Lynnfield. While recognizing the major dollar contribution made by Marketplace, well articulated by Selectmen Chairman Crawford. I have begun to be increasingly concerned about our air quality due to traffic congestion in Walnut Street, Salem Street, and Marketplace itself. With an approximate senior population of thirty-five percent in Lynnfield, this is a very legitimate concern. I recently contacted the Lynnfield Board of Health in early April to ask if any air quality testing or benchmark air quality testing was being performed. The answer was no. The person told me, the Board Health told me that the state was testing Lynn and some other communities, but not Lynnfield. Subsequently last week, I received a call from our Board of Health asking for my home address. And they said that they had requested funding for testing, but that the Board of Selectmen had rejected it. They asked my address and said they were going to send me a letter, which I received today. The letter indicates that Essex County does not have pollution. But I'm talking about Lynnfields, not Essex County. Some Sundays, if you take a ride for a donor up Route twenty-eight, 128 north, and look over toward 128 south, you see how unbelievable lines of traffic on the south side of 128 trying to enter Walnut.
Mr. Lacorze, your three minutes has lapsed, but I'll allow you to opine for maybe fifteen more seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm requesting that the Board of Health speak up, if they're in attendance, with respect to my motion, and I have some questions for the Board of Health. I think I'm within my time frame now.
Is Dr. Ialco here tonight from the Board of Health? Mr. Dolan, would you care to address that?
Mr. Ma, I would ask Kristen McCray, who is currently our Health Director.
Kristen, may I speak with her?
Okay.
Could a runner please bring?
She would be far more qualified than I would in terms of speaking of the merits of air quality studies. Kristen is here.
Could a runner please bring a microphone to Mrs. McCray?
Kristen McCray, Lynnfield Board of Health, Agent and Director. Yes, I did receive your request for air quality information, and the Lynnfield Board of Health had not undertaken an air quality study at Market Street. Had not actually been requested of that in the past. But the state does do air quality testing, and so I did provide a copy from the State Department of Public Health.
I received that today, and it talks about Essex County. That's all. Essex County is not violating the health rules or the pollution rules, but I'm talking about Lynnfield. And I'm asking, are you planning to institute any testing for air quality in Lynnfield?
I believe that would be a greater. I believe that would be a greater subject of conversation that may also require other departments to weigh in. To undertake an air quality study would be specialized outside consulting services. So we did receive your request recently. And what I had available was the State Department data.
Thank you, Mrs. McCray. Mr. LaCourts?
Can I ask a question of the Board of Health?
Ms. LaCourts, I've already indulged you for about six minutes on this subject.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. McKendrick?
Yes, I have somebody who wishes to speak to the motion.
You may indulge them.
Rocco Ayako, Chairman of the Board of Health. As it currently is constituted, the air quality issue, which was, is being discussed, is something that's new to us. Linfield has been bordered by 128 and 95 for the last number of decades. And I would think the traffic flow from those two major arteries would create a much more of a concern for air quality. But certainly, this is something that we could look into in further discussion and other department heads deem what is necessary and follow through. The original request, and I diverge from the motion on the floor, but I just wanted to speak to the budget submitted by the, that is on the town budget. Our original request was for $6,000 more. And that was not related to salary, but that was related to the operational expenses and what the Board of Health is mandated by the state to do in terms of food establishments and their inspections, the septic systems in Linfield that need to be inspected with regards to Title V. So there's a tremendous amount of workload with the Board of Health that we do that's important, that's mandated. And quite frankly, the town of Linfield has changed. The complexion has changed with Market Street and the increase in food establishments from, I believe, under 40 to close to 80 at this point. So I just want to make the townspeople aware of some of the budgetary concerns that our Board has. But certainly, getting back to Mr. LaCourts' request, that's something that can be discussed and looked into in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Is there any more debate on Ms. LaCourts' amendment to increase line item 83 The question has been called. We'll now proceed to a vote. To move the question, it's a procedural town meeting of Robert's Rules. So Jessica's all set up. Voting is now open to call the question. To end debate, vote yes. To continue debate, vote no. We'll now proceed to a vote on Mr. LaCourts' amendment. It's been moved and seconded by Mr. LaCourts to increase line item 83 by $42,304. Strike that. It's been moved and seconded that line item 83 have a total amount of $42,304 contained in it. Jessica, can we please put the slide up? Ms. LaCourts' amendment fails. 264 to 225. We'll now proceed to continue along with the line item budget. Is there any further discussion between lines 82 and lines 97? Mr. McKendrick, anyone in there? Is there any debate concerning page 18? Is there any debate concerning page 19? Is there any debate concerning page 20? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 6. Article 6 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate, and appropriate by transfer, the sums of $56,681,943 for the necessary town charges and expenses presented by the Board of Selectmen and is shown in the Finance Committee report beginning on page 7 thereof. Article 6 passes by majority. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, or appropriate by transfer, from available funds or by borrowing, or from any other, or from any or all such sources, sums of money for the purchase of various equipment and items in the nature of capital expenditure and to give authority to credit to the value of various old equipment to be turned in towards the purchase price of said items, said sums of money to be expended under the direction of various town boards, committees, or officers, or to be taken, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Barrett?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $942,215 from free cash and $40,000 from the Gulf Enterprise retained earnings for the purchase of various equipment and items of nature of capital expenditures, as shown on the Finance Committee report on page 22 thereof.
I'll second that motion.
Article 7 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $942,215 from free cash and $40,000 from Gulf Enterprise retained earnings for the purchase of various equipment and items in the nature of capital expenditures, as shown in the Finance Committee report on page 22 thereof. Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 7.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 7.
Is there any debate on Article 7? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 7. The yeses have it. Article 7 passes. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or appropriate by transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the town's stabilization fund, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Dalton?
I move that the town appropriate $150,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund.
Second? It's been moved in sec, Article 8 has been moved and seconded that the town appropriate $150,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund. Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 8.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 8.
Is there any debate on Article 8?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator? Yes, we have one. Hang on.
Hi, my name is Jill Giuliano. I have a question. What is recreation $300,000? Can you please explain that to me?
Mrs. Giuliano, we're currently on Article 8 right now.
I'm sorry, but this is not Article 8?
Your question is?
$300,000 on Article 8. Okay, thank you, sorry. I'll come back.
Your question's concerning Article 9. I can recognize you on Article 9 if you'd like. Hearing no more debate, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 8. Article 8 carries. The yeses have it. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amounts that they may, that may be expended from each such fund in fiscal year 2020. Council on Aging $50,000, Board of Health $15,000, Library $10,000, Recreation $300,000, Public Works Fields $60,000, Public Works Merit Center $10,000, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from each such fund in the fiscal year 2020. Council on Aging $50,000, Board of Health $15,000, Library $10,000, Recreation $300,000, Public Works Fields $60,000, Public Works Merit Center $10,000.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved, Article 9 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from each such fund in fiscal year 2020, as listed in the warrant paper. Recommendation for Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 9.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 9.
Mr. McKendrick, would Mrs. Giuliano like to speak to this article?
Yes, she would. She's coming to the microphone right now.
She is so recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I'd like some explanation. What is the $300,000 recreation spending on? Could somebody elaborate on that, please, and explain?
Mr. Dolan?
Mrs. Giuliano, a revolving fund speaks to programs that people pay for. And then the Recreation Department would then be able to use that money for those specific programs. So the $300,000 would be money spent, for an example, summer camps or summer programs or basketball or some sort of activity. That money then to be used for those programs in a revolving manner. They have to be specific programs that are offered by the Rec Department to be used within the Rec Department.
Okay, no rail to trail money, right?
I was going to say it, but no, there's no rail for trail money there, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Giuliano. Is there any further debate on Article 9? Seeing and hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Mr. Schellmann, would you like to be recognized? Can we bring a runner down?
No, I'm just wondering. I see in there the, I'm Gerald Schulman. I've been in this town 40 years, three saunders road. I think you know me. Anyway, $10,000 for the library, for the amount of usage the library gets, isn't that a low amount or it's a revolving fund? Please, please define what you mean by revolving fund. $10,000 can be used by one program, never mind for the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
Mr. Schellmann, that money would be, for example, fines, book funds. So that money that they take in could then be used back in the library. Lost books, late fees. And they obviously take that money and use it for library purposes. Again, that's not an operating budget item. It allows the department to take money in and then use it for that department specifically. In some ways, yes, it is, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Schellmann. Is there any further debate on Article 9? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 9. Article 9 passes. The yes have it. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from emergency medical service enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to operate the emergency medical services in the town of Linfield, said enterprise fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2019 from persons using said service or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Barrett?
Thanks, Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2020 the sum of $782,326 from emergency medical service enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund emergency medical service operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2020 from persons using this service.
I'll second that motion.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2020 the sum of $782,326 from emergency medical service enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund emergency medical service operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2020 from persons using this service. Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 10.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 10.
Is there any debate on Article 10? Mr. Schellmann? Can I bring down runner? Can I have a microphone, please?
Sure, with the amount of money that's to be expended. But how is it going to be expended? Does this rest with the Police Department, with the Fire Department, with the senior center to take people to their doctor's appointments or emergencies to the hospitals? And is there a miles limit to take people who need, senior citizens especially, medical aid to hospitals or to their, to the medical care?
Mr. Dolan?
I think that should be clarified.
Thank you, Mr. Schellmann.
Before this party could vote on a sum of money, that should be clarified in how the Finance Committee arrived at that sum of money. Who is going to do it? When are they going to do it? What are they going to do it? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan?
Yes, Mr. Schellmann, the enterprise fund is created by the needs of the ambulance service that the Linfield Fire Department runs. That is crafted by the chief of the Fire Department based upon the needs to fully run the ambulance. Our ambulance services services the people of Linfield. And the chief can talk about it far more articulately than I can. Any citizen, 24 hours a day, for however long they need that service. That's, no, that's just the ambulance, sir. Yes.
Is there any further debate on Article 10?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator. We have a question, uh, on both this article and the next one, too. It says, "The fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2019." Is that correct, or it should be fiscal year 2020?
Should be 2020, Mr. Moderator, and I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion's correct. So the article is incorrect, but the motion was correct, so no further, uh, correction need be made. Mr. McKendrick, is there any further debate in the gymnasium?
No, there isn't.
Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 10. Voting is now open. The yeses have it, Article 10. Article 10 passes. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from golf enterprise receipts, and/or golf enterprise retained earnings, to pay expenses and contractual services required to operate Reading Metal Golf Course and King Rail Golf Course. Said enterprise fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2020 from persons using the golf course, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Dolan?
I move that the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2020 the sum of $950,000 from golf course enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund golf course operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2020 from persons using the golf courses. I'll second.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2020 the sum of $950,000 from golf course enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund golf course operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2020 from persons using the golf course. Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 11.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 11.
Is there an explanation on Article 11? For Mr. Dolan?
Same as Article 10, which, uh, the earnings of the golf course through an enterprise fund are used to, uh, offset the expenditures of, of said golf course.
Mr. McKendrick, is there any debate in the gymnasium?
No, there isn't.
Runners, can we have a, uh, microphone here, please?
Debbie Cawning, Six Sylvan Circle. I'm just wondering what kind of expenses fall into the other category?
Mr. Dolan?
The, the number one item there would be the golf carts. Uh, that is, that's predominant. Uh, there is some other maintenance issues, auxiliary, but predominantly it's golf carts, ma'am. And maintenance of the greens.
Is there any further debate on Article 12? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 12. 11. Still taking the training wheels off. Voting is now open. The yeses have it. Article 11 passes by majority. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17(c), establishment of 25 miles per hour speed limit in thickly settled or business district in the city or town violation, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to adopt the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 6, 17(c).
I'll second that motion.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to adopt the provision, the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17(c). Is there an explanation on this article? Mr. Dolan?
Yes, under the Municipal Martinization Act, signed by the governor, uh, there's certain acts that allow for local preference. This is one of those. Uh, we feel strongly, myself and the chief of police, as well as our city engineers, that by limiting the speed limit to 25 miles per hour, in non-designated speed, uh, areas that have a non-designated speed limit, would provide increased safety in our neighborhoods and improve our quality of life. Uh, we support this, uh, also support this article, and, uh, ask for passage.
Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends Article 12.
Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 12.
Is there a recommendation from Planning Board? Is there any debate on Article 12? Mr. Schellman, can we get a runner? The gentleman in the front?
A reduced speed limit is really nice, but it's never enforced, so what's the point?
Uh, can you please state, state your name for the record and your address?
Mary Riley, Friendship Lane. Every week you read in the paper, citation, a warning, a warning. Nobody gets a ticket for speeding.
I'm gonna refer that to the chief of police.
Mr. Breen?
Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
You're welcome.
Oh, I see you up there, ma'am. Yes, uh, we do issue citations. Some of those citations are written warnings, some of those are civil fines, and some of those are criminal charges. So I'm more than happy to sit down with you and show you the numbers, but we are out there, we do enforce the speed limit. I just would like to, um, if I, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, you may.
Comment on this. Um, Mr. Dolan spoke about the speed limit would be lowered to 25 miles per hour in those areas already, uh, not designated with a speed limit. So, for instance, on part of Summer Street, the speed limit is 35 miles per hour. That will not change. It is not allowed by law. I just like, wanted to get that out there, because I thought that question would be answered.
Thank you, Chief Breen.
Thank you.
The gentleman up front, Mr. Schellman?
Uh, I think all I have to say, it's about time to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. However, I think if you look into the statutes, it's not General Law's Chapter 90, there's additional statute, saying it cannot be a blanket 25, or 15, or 20 miles per hour speed limit. What you have to do is to examine how many accidents there have been in the road. Now, I know Linfield Center, they come, I, I'm there every day, and when I come out of the library, or I come out of stores, they're going 50 miles an hour through Linfield Center, and someone is going to get killed. There have been accidents taking place. So what I would recommend, and I was active at another city, and this fact was ever, Chris, uh, that, I think, in the, in the center of town, the speed limit, I hate to, the speed limit should be 15 miles per hour. Really, really small, 15 miles per hour through the center of town. And there are other parts of that town, too, that it should be 15 miles per hour, not 25 miles, because they come through, up above, up, up above about 50 miles an hour now. And there's, there's gonna be a toll, there have been bad accidents now.
Mr. Schellman, is that a motion?
The police are there, and that's it.
Mr. Schellman, is that a motion?
Thank you.
Is there any further debate on Article 12? The gentleman right here?
Uh, Richard Casey, Sylvan Circle. Uh, maybe the chief could answer this, uh, for me. Will this article impact Salem Street, uh, between Route 1 and Goodwin Circle? Will it lower the speed limit there? That stretch of road is just terrible. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd have to check that, uh, that section, uh, to see if that is already posted. Uh, is it, is that a 30 mile per hour road? I'm not quite sure. Do you know if that's already posted? Sir? If it's not posted, then it will be reduced to 25. But if you could give me a call tomorrow, I'll take a ride up there, I'll take a look at it, and, and we can talk about it. But if it's not already posted prior to the, uh, vote on this, then it will be reduced to 25 from that stretch.
There is a traffic signal that is there, and years ago, the traffic light, well, the traffic down a little bit, it was like, you know, without the neighborhood?
I'm sorry, years ago, the traffic light used to blink yellow, and it gave you an opportunity maybe to get out of the neighborhood. But now it's just, uh, solid green, and it's, uh, it's too fast.
I know what you're talking about. I think I responded to that, a motor vehicle hit that and knocked it over about 10 or 15 years ago. But we can look into that with, um, mascot. So if you could give me a call tomorrow, I'd be more than happy to talk to you, take a look at that, and we can examine.
Thank you for your comment. So the gentleman in the back behind the camera? I'd ask, uh, runners, just keep the microphones if, uh, someone on the speaker is asking a question, so we can hear them respond.
Walter Champa, Friendship Lane. My question is, what is defined as thickly settled or business district? And is there a time limit during the day or night?
Chief Breen?
I, I think Mr. Tomas has the better explanation, but Mr. Tomas, DPW director, would be able to define that for you.
Thickly settled, uh, homes or dwellings, 200 feet or less, for a quarter mile or more. That's a thickly settled, uh, neighborhood. No, there are no time restrictions. Yes.
The gentleman up in the back, wearing the black shirt?
Hello, Ian Claypool, Summer Street. The chief specifically, uh, mentioned Summer Street, and I think if I understand right, he said that it's excluded from this. What would it take to get it unexcluded, and get the speed limit on Summer Street dropped to 25? Because frankly, with a 35 mile an hour speed limit, some people just seem to go through there multiplied by two, especially at night.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes, in order to get it excluded, we would have to do a traffic study, uh, with a study of the average speed, then submit it for approval to the Commonwealth, um, which we would be willing to do and take a look at. Uh, also, it should be noted that we do have a complete streets program around in front of the school. I know this is not the venue, but that will hopefully address some of the speed issues on Summer Street, uh, in front of the school area. But we are looking at that study to go through the secondary process, uh, if we can, uh, to reduce speed.
Is there any further debate on Article 12? In the middle?
Anna Tatty Ocean, Heather Drive. If this article passes, how soon are the postings gonna go up? Because we have a lot of people coming in from out of town with Market Street there, and the town people may know of it, but outsiders won't. So will there be postings put up? And what the timeframe will be for that?
Mr. Dolan?
Obviously, we wouldn't be able to allocate, uh, dollars into the new fiscal year, but we would begin during that time, uh, to plan to evaluate all the streets. Uh, we want to be sensitive to signage, we'd have a public information campaign, uh, so the work would begin immediately, uh, and, uh, the completion of that work would, would be at the discretion of the DPW, when we can get the signs made and up, in, in the best way possible.
Mr. McKendrick, is there any further debate on Article 12?
May also, we'll make sure that we will post them at the, all the time, and, the town entryways, uh, for people know coming into Linfield.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Is there any further debate in the gymnasium?
No, there isn't.
Is there any further debate in the auditorium? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 12. Article 12 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to adopt the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17(c). Polling is now open. The yeses have it. Article 12 passes by majority. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file with the General Court a petition for special legislation to remove the position of sealer of weights and measures from the provisions of the Civil Service Law substantially as follows. Provided that the General Court may be, may, make clerical or editorial changes of the form only to, to the bill, unless the Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, the Selectmen being hereby authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file with the General Court a petition for special legislation to remove the position of sealer of weights and measures from the provisions of the Civil Service Law, as listed in the warrant.
I'll second that motion.
Article 13 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file with the General Court a petition for special legislation to remove the position of sealer of weights and measures from the provisions of the Civil Service Law, as listed in the warrant. Recommendation from Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 13.
Is there an explanation on this article? Mr. Dolan?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. For 48 years, Mr. Admich Milchessky, uh, served the town of Linfield on a, uh, as a civil service employee, uh, as the weights and measures, conducting, uh, weights and measure inspections at stores and gas stations, et cetera. He has since retired, and we thank him for his service. However, the need for that position is limited in the town of Linfield. We have hired temporarily an individual that can come in, who works for another municipality on his own time, uh, to service, uh, this on a per diem basis. Uh, we are asking to hire this individual permanently, but, but to do so, would ask to take this position out of civil service.
Is there any debate on Article 13? Mr. McKendrick, is there anyone in the auditor, the gymnasium who would like to speak?
No, there is not.
Hearing and seeing no debate, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 13. Voting is now open. Article, Article 13 passes, the yeses have it. We'll now proceed to Article 15, due to Article 14 not being actionable per Mass General Law 48, Section 5. I, I'll now, uh, recognize our town council, Tom Mullen, for an explanation.
Yeah, I'm Tom Mullen, I'm the town council. Under Chapter 48, Section 5, whenever there is a proposed zoning amendment on the warrant, town meeting may consider and vote on it only if the Planning Board holds a public hearing and issues a report and recommendation, or, uh, more than 21 days elapse between the Planning Board's hearing and the town meeting without a report and recommendation. In this case, the Planning Board conducted its hearing, the hearing ended within the 21 days, and the Planning Board has not issued a report and recommendation, uh, so we cannot legally proceed with a, a vote.
Without objection, we'll, uh, move to Article 16, uh, Article 15, I apologize. To see if the town will vote to amend the... To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Linfield zoning bylaws in the following respects. By amending Appendix A, the Table of Use Regulations, to require a special permit from the planning board for any housing for the elderly use, and to allow single-family residential use as of right in the elderly housing district by revising the column under elderly housing to read as follows in the warrant booklet, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Charville.
Good evening, I'm Brian Charville, and I'm Little of Lane, and I'm the chairman of the planning board. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by amending Appendix A, the Table of Use Regulations, to designate the review authority for the housing for the elderly district as the planning board, in the column under elderly housing, the fifth residential entry, from Y to PB, as listed in the warrant. Article 15.
Do I hear a second?
Second that motion.
Article 15 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by amending Appendix A, the Table of Use Regulations, to designate the review authority for the housing for the elderly as the planning board in the column under elderly housing from Y to PB, as listed in the warrant booklet. Recommendation from the planning board?
The planning board recommends adoption of Article 15.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 15.
Is there any debate on Article 15? The gentleman right here, in the white shirt.
Bukowski, 17th and Row. Could I have just a little explanation on exactly what are we changing? A little further than, gee, we're going to change this to PB from Y.
Mr. Charville.
If we could articulate that, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, I was confering with town council. Would you repeat the question?
The prior speaker asked if you could give an explanation on Article 15.
I'd be happy to. Right now, in the reconsolidated zoning bylaw, as adopted at a town meeting in October of 2017, any elderly housing use in an elderly housing district was by right. There's simply a Y in the Table of Uses and Regulations. With this change, by adding PB in place of the Y, the planning board will be granted by town meeting, special permit authority, which, under the Massachusetts General Laws and the zoning bylaw, would allow the planning board, each time an elderly housing project is brought to us, to impose specific conditions as part of granting a special permit for the use. So if you all would give us that authority, it will enable the planning board on behalf of the town to better control things on a project-by-project basis.
Mr. Mullen.
Just one thing I'd add to what the chairman of the planning board has said, which is that Article 15 also makes single-family residential use and as-of-right use in the elderly housing district. The reason for that is, previously, the only as-of-right use was, as you heard, housing for the elderly. And if we're going to make that a planning board special permit use, we have to have some as-of-right use. State law requires that in every zoning district, there be at least one as-of-right use. So the planning board, I believe, supports the idea of making the one as-of-right use in the elderly housing district, single-family, because that is the most restrictive use available.
Mr. Crawford.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in Article 15, and to add a footnote four to the Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, Section 4.1.2 of the zoning bylaws, next to the words elderly housing district, such footnote to read, "Single-family residential use available as-of-right in the elderly housing district is subject to the same dimensional and density requirements that apply in the single-resident D district."
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in Article 15, and to add a footnote four to the Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, 4.1.2 of the zoning bylaws, next to the words elderly housing district, such footnote to read, "Single-family residential use available as-of-right in the elderly housing district is subject to the same dimensional and density requirements that apply in the single-residence district D." Mr. Crawford.
Thank you. And this is the motion that is adding to this to give an as-of-right use for the land, as Town Council Mullen had just referred to. So it's an amendment that needed to be done to the visual motion.
Is there any further debate or discussion on the gentleman right here? I'd ask that you please just limit your discussion to...
Okay, Andy Philbin, 169 Essex. What constitutes elderly? Is the age 55? Is the age 65? What is it? And the other thing is that I may not have got it correct, but if something is a single-family residence that requires 60,000 square feet to build a single family on that property, does that mean that the elderly will have the same restriction that needs 60,000 square feet to build a home?
Well, what's the field that?
I'll respond to this latter part first. No, that backstop, if you will, of the Residence D requirements in terms of lot size and setbacks, would apply only to the single-family use if that would occur in the EH district, not to the EH use in the EH district.
The... Once it's the elderly, it doesn't have to have 60,000 square feet?
If it's the elderly housing use that's occurring. That's right.
At the present time, what is required of the square footage for the elderly housing? Per unit or per family?
Tom Mullen, I'm the town council. Right now, the minimum lot size for, in the elderly housing district, is four acres. And legally, we can't require a four-acre lot for a single-family home. So to avoid what's called a snob zoning legal attack, we have to have some kind of reasonable minimum lot size requirement if somebody uses any part of the elderly housing district for single-family use. 60,000 is the biggest minimum lot size we have in Linfield, so that's why the planning board adopted it.
Okay, so if you're building an elderly project, are you saying that you need 60,000 square feet or not? Maybe I'm stupid.
No, you're not stupid. It's confusing stuff, but think of it this way. If in the elderly housing district you want to build, there are two things you could build. As-of-right, you could build single-family homes, in which case you have to have 60,000 square feet minimum per lot. With a special permit, you could build an elderly housing project, in which case you need a four-acre lot minimum. Okay?
Okay, but you're still not telling me how many people I can put in the four acres. Maybe I'm... Am I losing it?
No, no. Elsewhere in the bylaw, in the section that we're not looking to change, no one's looking to change, it says that no project in the elderly housing district may exceed 136 units.
Okay, so that's good. I can put 136 units on 60,000 square feet. On four acres.
Mr. Charville, what constitutes elderly for the, in the zoning bylaw? Just to answer the speaker's question.
I believe it's defined as age 55-plus.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Article 15? The gentleman in the front? Yeah, yeah.
Mark Claude, Chestnut Street. I just want to know what the Finance Committee thinks.
Sure. The Finance Committee earlier tonight voted to recommend Article 15.
Hi, Mr. Cale.
So just a little bit of color on that recommendation. So it was a close vote. One of the things that we've been discussing as a Finance Committee, as these elderly housing projects come up, is the benefit of moving these parcels of land into elderly housing, and that it reduces the ability for that property to be developed as single-family homes. Obviously, when you're building new single-family homes, you're putting pressure on the school systems as more and more family, school-aged families move into town. What this article does, is we're starting to understand, is that if we pass Article 15, and then rezone something into elderly housing, this still gives the developer the ability to build single-family residential houses in that property. So as a Finance Committee, we've been thinking, if we move a parcel of land into elderly housing, that building a single-family house is no longer an option. Article 15 would still give the developer that option. Therefore, we wouldn't eliminate that risk of developing into single-family houses. So just something to consider.
Is there any further discussion on the Board of Selectmen's amendment? If not, we'll proceed to a vote on the Board of Selectmen's amendment. There's a... Jessica, can we please take the slide off? We have a question for Mr. Shulman. Runners... Mr. Shulman, can you please stand so the runners can find you? Mr. Shulman, can you please wait for a microphone? Runners, can we have... Oh, I apologize, I didn't see you in the back.
It's okay. Holly Champa, Friendship Lane. So my question is, if this passes, if we vote to amend this, say Article 16 passes tonight, and the elderly housing development is allowed, if he doesn't sell enough elderly housing, is he allowed to put single-family houses now as well in this development?
So what?
It's just as an example, because I really don't understand it as much.
So I'd ask, that's concerned to a different article tonight, but I would say that we're discussions on the amendment of...
No, this is for 15.
So it would... Mr. Mullen?
I'm confused as to what authority this gives, and what authority does it give developers? That's what I'm...
Okay.
I'm just using 16 as an example.
Mr. Mullen?
So with respect, because you bring it up to the particular development that we're going to deal with in Article 16, that property is already in Residence D. So if we do nothing at all, the developer, the owner, can develop single-family homes there on 60,000-square-foot lots. So the significance of the Selectmen's amendment here is, it would not make the situation any worse. What it would do is, it would give the developer an opportunity to develop that property for elderly housing. And you're going to hear on the next article that that's something the Selectmen have entered into an agreement with the developer to encourage him to do.
I hope that answered your question. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the Board of Selectmen's amendment. The amendment was... Jessica, can we just take the slide off? I just want to restate the amendment.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. We had a question, is this a two-thirds, or is this a simple majority? And also on the main motion.
The amendment is a majority vote, and the Article 15 is a two-thirds vote.
Okay, thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to amend Article Mr. Shulman, can you please wait for a microphone?
We believe that an amendment to a motion requires a two-thirds vote in accordance with Roberts Rules of Order. A two-thirds vote. This has to do with land, the development of land, so requires a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Shulman, I would say, my interpretation of Roberts Rules would say that to amend a motion, it's a majority vote, but I'll ask town council to confer.
But I believe it's a two-thirds vote, Tom.
To amend a motion requires a majority vote, not a two-thirds. Majority vote to amend, once we're back on the main motion, one way or the other, as the moderator said, it takes a two-thirds vote to approve a zoning change.
What about the principal motion? Does that require a majority or a two-thirds vote?
The principal motion here requires a two-thirds vote because it's a zoning change.
Thank you.
Article 15 has been... Is there any further discussion on Article 15's amendment? Yes, Mrs. Orlando. Can we have a runner in the front for a microphone, please?
Candice Orlando Siegel, five Wild Way.
Could you please stand when you make your remarks? Thank you.
If this passes, does the planning board get to make all these decisions, if not all of us at one of these town meetings?
Mr. Mullen?
Okay, I'll... Let me repeat the question as I understand it, which is, if this article passes, does the planning board get to make the decisions?
Make decisions rather than all of us.
Rather than town meeting. The answer is, if this passes, then anyone who wants to build an elderly housing project in the elderly housing district needs to get a special permit from the planning board.
Instead of us.
No. If you take no action at all, then anyone who owns property in the elderly housing district can build an elderly housing project without your approval and without the planning board's approval. It's an as-of-right use. The purpose here is to impose some kind of regulation, and we get a lot of good regulation through a special permit administered by the planning board.
So just one more point on that, on your question there, ma'am, was that we are still, as in, we are in Article 16, town meeting is deciding to put, is deciding whether or not to put that parcel into an elderly housing zone. Once it's in that zone, then the planning board would have to issue the special permit. So unless you have, somebody owns a parcel of land that's already zoned, EH, elderly housing, this wouldn't make a difference. Town meeting would still get a crack at putting the zone, putting the parcel into elderly housing zone.
Thank you. I'm going to proceed to a vote on the amendment, and I'll indulge discussion on the regular article, if there's no objection. Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the amendment. Mr. Crawford has amended the zoning, amended Article 15, which would read, "The zoning bylaws as set forth in Article 15, and to add a footnote four to the Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, 4.1.2 of the zoning bylaws, next to the words elderly housing district, such footnote to read, 'Single-family residential use available as-of-right in the elderly housing district is subject to the same dimensional and density requirements that apply in the single-residence D district.'" Voting will now be open once the slide comes up. The amendment passes by majority. Now we'll proceed to any more discussion on Article 15. Seeing or hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote on Article 15 as amended. To amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in Article 15, and to add a footnote four to the Table of Dimensional and Density Regulations, 4.1.2 of the zoning bylaws, next to the words elderly housing district, such footnote to read, "Single-family residential use available as-of-right in the elderly housing district is subject to the same dimensional and density requirements that apply in the single-residence D district." Voting will be open once the slide comes up. Voting is now open. The article passes by a two-thirds vote. 392 yes, 123 no. Article 15 passes. Article 16, to see, Ms. Lacorice? Can a runner bring a microphone down, please, for Ms. Lacorice?
Harry Lacorice, Parkville Lane. We're coming up to Article 16, so I have a point of order question, Mr. Moderator. At one time, discussion on articles was limited to 10 minutes. Now I hear three minutes. I can't get my teeth in, get my glasses adjusted, and pick up the microphone volume in three minutes. It just don't work. When did this happen?
So last October, we passed two bylaws. I'm not certain of the specific wording of the sections of bylaws they are, but one, one bylaw, the bylaw we presented was 10 minutes for presenters and three minutes for speakers. So that bylaw overruled Roberts' Rules of Order.
How do we adjust that, change that?
You would have to repeal the bylaw, which is a two-thirds vote, at another town meeting.
At another town meeting.
Correct.
I really think it's too short a period of time to discuss the issues. I don't want to be here all night.
But at any time, you can extend debate by majority vote at, on the floor of town meeting.
I could ask for an extension.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Lacorice. Article 16, "To see if the town will vote to amend the existing zoning map of the town of Linfield, Massachusetts, December 1953, together with all duly adopted amendments and revisions thereto, as filed in the office of the town clerk, so that the following described parcel located at and behind 1414 Main Street, Linfield, Essex County, Massachusetts, being shown on Assessors Map 8 as lots 1325, 1488, and 2113, to be rezoned from the Residence D zoning district to the elderly housing district. A certain tract of land on the north side of Main Street in Linfield, Massachusetts, Essex County, shown as Lot A on a plan entitled Rezoning Plan, located in Linfield, Massachusetts, prepared for the Suzanne-Winn 2010 Provocable Trust and Richardson Green Incorporated dated January 28, 2019, prepared by the Moore &amp; Cameron Group Incorporated, Danvers, Massachusetts, to read as follows in the warrant booklet or to take any other action in connection therewith." Mr. Kimble?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the existing zoning map of the town of Linfield, Mass., dated December 1953, together with all duly adopted amendments and revisions thereto, as filed in the office of the town clerk, so that the following described parcel located at and behind 1414 Main Street, Linfield, Essex County, Mass., being shown on Assessors Map 8, as lots 1325, 1488, and 2113, be rezoned from Residence D RD zoning district to the elderly housing EH district, as listed in the warrant.
If I were to second it? Article 16 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the existing zoning map of the town of Linfield, Massachusetts, December 1953, together with all duly adopted amendments and revisions thereto, as filed in the office of the town clerk, so that the following described parcel located at and behind 414 Main Street, Linfield, Essex County, Massachusetts, being shown on Assessors Map 8, as lots 1325, 1488, 2113, to be rezoned from the Residence D zoning district to the elderly housing district, as listed in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm now going to recognize Mr. Kimble for a presentation. He's allotted 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I am, as the disclosure requires, the lawyer representing the developer in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Kimble.
Thank you. We're asking you to vote yes on this Article 16 tonight. The purpose of it is to rezone the 22.6 acres of land, which are currently Residence D, to elderly housing. That is what the motion asks, that's what the warrant article asks, and we're asking you to vote yes at the time it comes because we need a two-thirds vote in order to proceed. The article will change the housing use, nothing more. It's important to know that this action will only re-characterize the land so that we may proceed with a very lengthy permitting process. It's important for everybody to know. Our original proposal, because everybody wants to see what you're going to do, contains 66 elderly housing dwelling units, two bedrooms, two cargo garage for each. Based on feedback at the planning board meeting from residents, we have reduced the proposed number of elder housing units to 56. Of the 56 units, one will be an affordable veterans unit, which will be dealt with by the town in terms of the lottery system, similar to other types of housing of that nature. Our local elderly housing zone in Section 11.5 prohibits occupancy of the elderly units by children under the age of 18, thus not adding to the school population issue. It's important to note again that this merely changes the proposed use to include elderly housing. It does not approve the project. If the article passes, there begins an extensive and comprehensive permitting process previously discussed, which includes input and regulation by the planning board, now the authority who would approve it, fire department, police department, board of health and building department. So there's quite a lengthy process in which neighbors and interested parties can attend the public hearings and voice their opinions. It's also important to note that the land, as had been sort of discussed earlier this evening, as is now zoned, could be divided into 18 building lots of 60,000 square feet apiece. Each of the lots could support up to a six-bedroom home with no resident age restriction. I hope you received the handout when you walked in tonight. The next speaker is Scott Cameron from Moore &amp; Cameron of Danvers, Mass., who is the project engineer, and he will be referring to the handout so that you'll have something right in front of you to see what we're discussing. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, with your approval.
So far, thank you.
Good evening, residents of Linfield. Through the moderator, I'd like to disclose that I work for Mr. Angus Bruce, who is a project developer as a civil engineering professional.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having us. In the packets you receive tonight, I'm going to be speaking to the pages numbered three through 10. I'll be going through some bullet points to summarize those pages, what you will find. Within those are various exhibits, the first illustrating a 66-unit elderly housing development proposal. Through the course of the past couple months of hard work by members of the community and our team, we have reduced that number to 56 units of housing. That exhibit is also in the packet. This is far less than 136 units otherwise allowed by the zoning. You will find next in the packet a concept of a 15-lot subdivision, which would add lots to the existing five lots that are already there. You'll see 20 lots on that exhibit. So the land before you tonight would contain 15 subdivision lots under the current zoning at 60,000 square feet per lot. I'm going to be talking to the differences between the current zoning of a subdivision of 15 lots and the elderly housing project. Notably, the elderly housing development would preserve 50% of the native woodland on the property. It would contain up to 80% open space that's not occupied by buildings or pavement. This is significantly greater open space and preservation of woodland than what would be allowed under a definitive subdivision, which would have no open space because it's all on private house lots or the roadway network. In the elderly housing proposal, 100% of the road maintenance, plowing, sanding, and otherwise, and trash removal would be paid for by the condominium association. A subdivision road, as currently allowed in the underlying zoning, would eventually be paid for by the town as a public road. Waste water treatment for the elderly housing project would come with enhanced treatment and strict maintenance as regulated by Mass. DEP. Compared to single-family septic systems, the level of treatment of wastewater is significantly greater and the oversight is significantly better to ensure protection of the water supply. Water withdrawal for domestic use would be through a public well permitted through Mass. DEP. Again, similar to the septic system, this would be highly regulated. It would be capped. They would not be able to allow to draw any more water than what would be allowed to not impact any adjacent wells. A single-family subdivision would not have any restrictions. I want to point out that the project, every unit in the elderly housing would be sprinkled with, and would have 500 gallons of water in each unit, and the project would also include a 60,000-gallon capacity for the fire department hookup to not only suppress fires for the development, but also for public use in the surrounding neighborhood. And as heard in the prior warrant article, the project would receive very technical and detailed review by the planning board, town departments, and the state, and it would have to receive approval as a special permit to develop the property. This is not the last stop, this would only be the first. I'd like to introduce Heather Monacop, traffic engineer.
Good evening, through the moderator, I am Heather Monacop, the traffic, from GPI, the traffic engineer for the, for Angus Bruce. Thank you. We prepared a preliminary traffic impact and access study that was submitted to the town. Pages 12 to 15 in your handout will explain some traffic points for the project. The site distances at the proposed site driveway location exceed local, state, and federal requirements for safe operation. As shown in the site distance figure on page 13 of your handout, available sightlines in each direction equate to approximately one and a half football fields. If site distance requirements were not met for this location, we would be discussing modifications that would be made, need to be made to the driveway, which we are not. Accordingly, the site driveway will not make Main Street any more dangerous. We've conducted additional analysis based on a 15-lot subdivision. The difference in traffic impact on Main Street between a 15-lot subdivision and the Woods of Linfield project are almost identical. As noted in the preliminary traffic impact and access study, the Woods at Linfield project will have negligible impact on operations on Main Street. There were some concerns about speeding to help reduce speeds in the area. The developer has agreed to provide up to three driver feedback signs. Studies have shown that speeds are reduced up to 80% of the time, and there's pictures shown on page 15 of your handout.
How are you doing? I'm the developer, Angus Bruce. I have a financial interest in this.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Let's go to the next slide. Just in regards to the project, I've rounded the numbers off. The project will make $517,000 annually. There'll be a one-time payment, this is on page 16, of $550,000, $10,000 a unit. The veterans unit is exempt. In the first 24 months of construction, the town will receive $1249,000. That's a 2.1% increase in your annual budget. If there's 16, if there's 15 family, single-family homes with 40 children, it will cost the town $285,000. I personally know from having a special needs child that if two special needs or IEP children are part of this package, you could have an additional $60,000 to $150,000 cost to the town with a 15-lot subdivision. If you go to the next page, pages 17 to 21, that just includes renderings, floor plans, interior pictures. Just to note that the quality that Linfield expects in the construction will be here. The project has no school-aged children. The project is designed for retired people to live with friends and family nearby. There's 400 feet of entrance, so the project will eliminate a visual impact on Main Street, and there's minimal impact on the community resources. I'll be available personally through the whole project to work with anyone in regards to any questions they have or issues that might arise. I hope you like my project, and I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Now we're going to hear from Mr. Ken Peterson, who is in opposition to this article, and he has a presentation, and you will be speaking to that presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Peterson. I am a licensed professional engineer, and I live on Main Street. The mission statement of the planning board is to act on behalf of we townspeople as stewards of the zoning bylaws. As such, the planning board has gone on record as opposed to Article 16 after presentations by both sides, this and this. The proposed Article 16 is a detrimental zoning change on Boston Globe, Lynn Item, and other newspapers cited, dangerous Upper Main Street. The requested change is from single-family homes on one and a half acre lots to large multifamily housing developments. The present single-family zoning has a lengthy historical precedent for the safety of we residents and heavy vehicle traffic on a dangerous, doubly-compound, steep, narrow, curved road. You're blindsided in this roadway because you can't see over the hills if you've driven on Upper Main Street. You can't see around the bends. We have numerous residential driveways coming out onto Upper Main Street, in addition to Friendship Lane and Catherine Drive. Our neighborhood record press file from 1985 to 2019 contains recognition of this danger from town selectmen, police and fire department chiefs, DPW directors, and even this attorney Kimble, who represented himself and 168 fellow Main Street residents on these dangerous traffic issues. This was done in 1985. He was concerned for the safety of his children. Main Street, Upper Main Street, has not changed since then, folks. It's as dangerous as ever. We see many signs throughout the town that were placed by this developer's realtor, and that contrasts with our slides. If I were to open our slides, you've seen them. We say no. And why do we say no? I'll tell you why. Also note, there is no, beyond Sagamore Golf Course going up Main Street. Unlike other parts of our town, there is no piped-in drinking water, with only our individual residential surface wells that could be lost in a hazardous material truck tanker roadway spill of hazardous waste. Or with this developer's large-scale well drilling and septic plants. He's putting a septic leaching field right next to our wells. Traffic crash accidents into trees, boulders, stone light posts, and limited guardrails in icy conditions are numerous. And in better weather, there's a danger in traffic stops for postal people, police, and fire personnel. Main Street is a county-state road, and heavy trucks shortcutting through Middleton to 128 cannot be banned by the town. That was what Mr. Kimble tried to do and couldn't in 1985. Further, these 56 or 66, take whatever you need, two cars per unit plus one visitor, would add 132 or more proposed additional cars that would create more congestion to the dangerous four-way stop signs at Main and Lowell Streets. We're all familiar with that. The flashing electronic signs proposed by this developer will not correct this, as these speeders are drinking, smoking, throwing, and now have recreational pot available. The streets up in this area are covered with whiskey bottles, high-proof, and the chief can't make a stop, in all fairness. He can't get out there, and he's got no room to stop. If the chief were to make a pinch on Upper Main Street, he could have a massive car accident with injury to himself getting out of his car. These dangerous Upper Main Street These dangerous Upper Main Street facts and conditions have been presented to both the planning and the selectmen's board at town meeting one year ago by we residents for a similar zoning change request. This was made by Sagamore Golf Course and wisely not approved by we voters, but put on hold by that developer. Certainly, if this Article 16 detrimental zoning change is now unwisely approved, that condominium developer will also return, as reported in the press, creating further the safety, traffic, fire, water, septic, and even Chapter 40B housing requirement problems. These condos would be addition to these. We're getting into a 40B problem. We must vote no here and now, tonight, to stop this nonsense. From attendants at this developer's meeting house session on 4/3/19, it seems all kinds of studies have been done on selling price, taxes, water, condo fees, and building design. But the one studied fact that dates back to before 1985, I've lived here nearly 40 years, is the safety of traffic on this road that can lead to deadly conditions for all people using Upper Main Street. This should be told to you voters before any time-proven zoning restrictions, such as we live with today, are discarded for this or any other builder's promises. At this location since 2007, we residents have seen two deplorable abandoned unsecured homes, oil slick spills, and a non-zone quarry business operated of highly questionable trucked-in material at all hours of the day. Is this a reflection of what to expect from this builder in others after the town changes its rightfully protective zoning for we and all residents on all historically dangerous Upper Main Street? In conclusion, I'll wrap it. The greatest danger to public safety and prevention of catastrophe is when those in town authority, press, citizens, and licensed professionals such as myself, I'm a registered engineer, with historical knowledge of traffic, dangerous conditions, lack of piped-in drinking water up beyond Sagamore, and we don't have fire hydrants either. You know, it's mentioned that there would be tankage down in this bottom condominium development. I challenged the Chief Davis, and I have the greatest respect for first responders, from the chief of police to the chief of the fire department. I challenged Chief Davis to try to get a pumper truck down to those tanks in this proposed condominium development as over 200 people try to flee. And believe me, up that 400-foot driveway would come a lot of residents fleeing in the event of a fire. He's not going to get in there. Our selectmen did a very, I don't know what the right word is, I respect this selectmen, a very incorrect thing in voting yes for this Article 16. The three members ignored issues raised and pleased of many residents. We wanted a no vote, and these people acquiesced to the developer's promise of money. They put money over our continued safety as residents and yours as motorists on dangerous Upper Main Street while thanking us for our valuable inputs. We try to make valuable inputs. We have no choice. This is a dangerous street. This is a dangerous proposition. Think of the four-way stop sign at Lowell Street. It's difficult now. With all these cars, it'd be worse. We voted taxpayers must keep a close eye on such issues going forward. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the boards, we resident fellow townspeople of Upper Main Street, as in years previous, ask for your no vote on this detrimental proposed zoning change of Article 16 for the sake of safety. Thank you and be safe.
Chief Brin, can you speak to three things that you raised, road jurisdiction, making stops briefly?
Well, Mr. Peterson's correct. Stopping vehicles on any road is inherently dangerous. And I've stopped cars up there for 25 years. I used to do traffic on Friendship Lane, traffic enforcement there, and also at the golf course dirt parking lot. I was very successful in stopping vehicles there. I was asked to do a study on the accident rate from the years 2014, beginning 1/114 and ending 12/31 of 2018. That's five years. And there were 18 accidents from the White House at the Sagamore Golf Course to the very beginning of Catherine Drive. So it was about 3.6 accidents per year in that area. Most of those accidents, or several of those, were deer strikes, and some of those were slick roads at which the vehicle struck the diego. Was there another thing, Mr. Moderator, that I missed? Another question?
Road jurisdiction.
That road is owned and operated by the town of Lynnfield. I think Mr. Peterson stated it was a state road or county road, but I have a discussion. That's correct. You cannot be on trucks there. That is correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Can we please hear from Chief Glenn Davis on respond, if you'd like to respond?
Chief Glenn Davis, Lynnfield Fire Department. I live on 98 High Line Ave. in Lynnfield. I think the first comment that was made is the ability to access or egress this proposed subdivision up on Upper Main Street. The initial proposal called for one roadway in. The developer has been very responsive to our requests from a fire department standpoint that we never like a single means of access or egress. And if you saw the slide, that he has complied completely with us and provided a secondary means of access and egress into that development. He has also offered to install water cisterns. Approximately 60,000 gallons of water would be stored on-site. That number is flexible. That's based on the type of construction. Wood frame is what's proposed at this point. But all of that would be engineered by fire protection engineers to provide enough water to provide fire suppression for the number and density of the properties on that proposed location. Is there any other?
I think that was it, Chief. Thank you. Go to recommendation from the planning board. Can you please go to the microphone, Mr. Charville?
Mr. Moderator, a majority of the planning board recommends against adoption of Article 16.
Thank you, Mr. Charville. Recommendation from the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen recommends Article 16.
Is there an explanation?
Yes, sir. When we had a, we had a long meeting the other, last week with all the neighbors and all the leadership parties from the town. And at the end of the day, what you're looking at in this development is whether we want to have 16 new five-bedroom homes, or do we want to look at a 55 and over elderly housing development for the town? And that's really what you're looking at. It's not the elderly housing or nothing. It's going to be elderly housing or 15 new homes. So that's the choice we have. So when we looked at it from our viewpoint, and we certainly had a very robust conversation with everybody, we had the chiefs there recommending, you know, the improvements. We certainly do look at the financial impact of the town, because that's what we do. The financial impact is much, much a detrimental impact to the town if it's all houses, both for the school system and for the town budget itself. We have to do plowing. We have to pick up trash. We have to maintain the street. There's a lot of expenses to the town for a single-family subdivision. The elderly housing, you wouldn't have any trash pickup. You would have, they would do their own plowing. They would have to take care of their own streets. So those, those are incidental costs. The biggest cost and the biggest impact would be on the schools. If you bring in 20 to 30 children on the conservative side with 16 five-bedroom homes, you're going to be having a strong impact on the Summer Streets Elementary School. You've already got nine new houses going in on Summer Street. You've got five other houses going in and further up on Upper Main Street. To add another 15 homes to the Summer Street School in a couple of years, we'd be looking at a large override for the town to expand the school system. So we're looking at what we think is the best for the town. An elderly housing district also doesn't add the traffic at rush hour like working families do today. So we, even though there might be more units, there's less traffic during the morning and night rush hours. And some of the biggest benefits we saw are for public safety. You have, you have no fire suppression ability up in that area today. With 15 houses, you'd still have no fire suppression. With elderly housing, they're going to put in a 60,000-gallon cistern to take care of not only fire suppression and fire safety for that development, but for the entire Upper Main Street area, which has no fire hydrants right now. So that's, that's a tremendous difference in what they have today. If you think of fire truck, the largest fire trucks have 750 gallons on a truck. If you add the ability to access 60,000 gallons of water, you can take care of a large emergency that they can't take care of today. You add that to the road improvements they're going to do with
Phil, your time has elapsed.
With other public safety, I, we strongly recommend you pass the elderly housing district and number 16. Thank you.
Is there a recommendation from the school committee? Is there a recommendation from the school committee? Is there a recommendation from the school committee? Is there a recommendation from the finance committee?
Finance committee recommends Article 16.
Is there an explanation?
Sure. I mean, much Chris Matia, Levon Maplewood wrote, in much to what Phil spoke about, our discussions were strongly in the, around the financial portion of it and the impacts to the budget and the way that a public access road in a 15-unit, single-family housing development and the impacts there around, around those as opposed to the proposed elderly development.
Thank you, Mr. Matia. Is there any discussion on the floor of town meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bob Greasley, Wing Road, Lynnfield. If it's okay, I'd like to ask the developer a couple of questions.
You may.
Thank you. Could you confirm the distance from the proposed septic system to both the town and your wells? And if that, and if you can confirm that, do these distances comply with the local, state, and any federal regulations?
You may respond.
The distance to the
Please recognize who you are.
I'm sorry, Scott Cameron. I work for Mr. Bruce as a civil engineer, professional. The distance from the well on-site to the septic system complies with the Zone 1 radius that is regulated by the state by Mass D E P, approximately 200 feet. The septic system itself is closer to 400 feet. And to the town wells, over a half-mile distance from the septic system to, and the wells in the development to the town wells.
Thank you. And what is the backup system that you are proposing to ensure the project will have safe drinking water indefinitely?
So the well system is through the state. It's very robust. So it's actually a series of three wells. So there's a, if one well goes down, there are two others to support it while that well is repaired. There would be backup power for it, and there would also be a backup hookup if you needed to bring water in from off-site to provide water supplies. There's quite a bit of protections to ensure that there's always water supply there.
All right, thank you. Just one follow-up. Are you guys providing, how do you design, providing water sprinklers inside the units for fire, to help with the fire prevention or fire suppression?
Yes. Each unit will be fitted with a holding tank and a sprinkler system so that they can provide interior suppression of the fire.
Okay, thanks. And just in closing, as the member of the finance committee and also just a fellow citizen, you are also, everybody was handed out a statement from the finance committee along with your packets out there. And in order to maintain Lynnfield's financial stability, we have to be, keep in mind, be more receptive to revenue-positive development opportunities as they do arise and find opportunities, you know, such as this one here, to help us with the fiscal responsibility in the town and to help reduce costs. So I think this project would help in both of those items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greasley. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to see if Chairman of the Scoop, maybe Jamie Hayman, could speak to the impact on the public schools with this development?
Mr. Hayman, would you like to speak?
Jamie Hayman, 8 Village Row, Chair of the School Committee. I want to preface this by saying the school committee has not taken a formal position on this, nor have we formally discussed that. That being said, we have looked at the development from the perspective of the schools, and my comments are being made under the assumption that there are two options on the table. A yes vote for the age-restricted 55-plus community, and the second option is the no vote, which would allow there to be a 15-unit, single-family home subdivision. We're assuming that status quo is not an option right now. So with those assumptions in mind, we looked at the two options through the lens of a couple of facts that I think are really important for everyone to consider when it comes to, when it comes to school space. Our elementary schools are rapidly approaching capacity. The Board of Selectmen last year started the school capacity enrollment committee. This is something that, that Mr. Crawford referred to. Based on that initial work done by the committee, we're pretty confident in saying that projected enrollment is going to put us at or above capacity, specifically at the, at the elementary schools in the coming years. There's going to be a feasibility study to understand what we could build if we wanted to, but that is still months away. With all of that being said, here's what we believe is the potential impact of the two options. At the highest level, a 55-plus community would cause a slight echo effect, which is current Lynnfield residents selling their homes to move into these townhouses. Based on the data presented last year with the Sagamore Project, this would likely result in an incremental 10 to 15, 10 to 15 homes becoming available with the addition of approximately 20 students spread across the school district. That's an important point because from an elementary school perspective, the students would be likely to be divided between both Huckleberry Hill School and Summer Street School. The development of the site as a 15-unit, single-family homes would likely bring 40-plus students to the district. These students would be in the summer school, summer school district, thus materially altering the enrollment of the Summer Street School. As I stated earlier, both of our elementary schools are running at or near capacity, and the influx of students would further exacerbate certain issues, which include but are not, not limited to school enrollment capacity and growth, transportation costs, and special, special service expenses. The expansion of these services represents substantial costs, all of which would fall on the taxpayer. Finally, these additional expenses would most likely slow the school's development, the school department's vision of expanding our learning opportunities, and introducing new programs to fulfill the needs of our learners.
Thank you, Mr. Hayman. Further discussion on the floor of town meeting?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. McKendrick.
We have a question from the gymnasium.
Hi, Brian Wolf, Toffett Road. There's been a lot of engineers talking tonight. There's been a lot of engineers talking tonight, so for the record, I'm a professional engineer as well. Just on page 10 of the developer's handout, there's a bullet item here that I want to make sure I understand. It says, "Lower water use than current single-family zoning allows." Number one, I didn't know, particularly on wells, that single-family homes had a limit on the water use. But I'm also curious as to what this means. Is this projection to say that the elderly housing unit, whether it's 56 or 66, would have a total lower usage than if it was a 15-lot residential development? I just want to make sure I understand what this statement is about.
So I'll have that answered in a two-part question. Mr. Cameron, may you able to answer this question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, so what this means is, under the public-well permitting that the elderly housing project would go through, Mass DEP sets a cap on the draw that can come out of that well. That cap cannot be exceeded by the development. There are strict penalties and fines if it does. In comparison to a 15-lot subdivision, a residential well would be a private well with no restrictions on the draw from that well. So a five-bedroom home could use whatever water they needed plus irrigation. We conservatively estimated, based on five bedrooms and 15 single-family homes compared to two bedrooms in the elderly housing age-restricted use, to have an equivalent water usage, except the difference being, under the current zoning, there would be no restrictions, so irrigation and other systems could likely increase that substantially.
Hope that answered your question. Further discussion? Can you please stand so the runner can see you? Can you please stand when you're addressing town meeting?
Sumora, Upper Main Street. Let's talk about land engineering. The proposal includes 1414 Main Street and 22 additional acres of forest land in the Linfield Water District. Let me give you an example of what 22 acres is. Hannah Fitz Plaza in West Peavy, now the Big Y, is 13 acres in total. So put two plazas back-to-back, gives you the magnitude of this proposal. This is huge. Let's talk water engineering from Northeast Water. This is from the Planning Board on the 16th of April. The water engineer hired by the developer had insufficient data on the well water to determine if there was adequate water supply to accommodate the 10,000 gallons per day... and by the way, that's the mass cap that the gentleman over there was talking about. 10,000 gallons a day needed to supply this project, along with supplying the Linfield Water District and supplying the local neighborhood with our drinking water. During the summer months, we see signs for limited water usage, and the Linfield Water District has enough problems, why would anybody want to make it worse? What the engineer failed to mention tonight is that 10,000 gallons needed per day has to drain somewhere. There is no city sewer to pipe it away, only a state-of-the-art septic system, which is a fancy name for a large leaching field. This will leach back into the ground 10,000 gallons of sewage a day, 3,650,000 gallons of sewage per year, 18,250,000 gallons in the first five years. This field is on top of a hill, and all our drinking wells are below that level. It's only a matter of times before our shallow wells are contaminated by the sewage, and the Linfield Water District also. We also lose. There's no winners here. The traffic engineer at the meeting of the Planning Board, who also had insufficient data because Sagamore Golf Course was not open for the season, he did mention the distance of 400 feet from the top of the hill of Friendship Land to the proposed entrance. He also mentioned approximately 390 cars per day would be entering and exiting this site. Let's talk about reality traffic. Everybody in this room bitched about people speeding all over Linfield. In the late 1960s...
I'd ask that you please not...
I'm sorry. In the late 1960s, my neighbor at 1386 Main Street was killed driving out of his driveway by a southbound speeding car. In 1978, I was driving north by Friendship Land, and a speeding car was passing in my lane. I swerved and totaled my car on the pole on Friendship Land. In the 1980s, a Pocahontas water truck hit a large oak tree at 1500 Main Street and had to be towed away.
Sir, your time has elapsed. I'll give you 10 seconds to finish.
Yep, okay. Friendship Land is a blind hill in both directions. Main Street is narrow, steep, and curved. We all know heavy trucks go north and south, up to 50 tons loaded. These vehicles need more than 400 feet to stop on a steep grid, especially if the roads are wet in the winter or summer. If any tractor-trailer comes over that hill at 35 miles an hour...
Sir, your time has elapsed.
I'm sorry. This is a big deal.
Sir, you're out of order.
And then pulls into Main Street, they must accelerate to 35 miles an hour. Otherwise, they're going to get killed. There you go.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McKendrick, one moment. I just want to clarify. I gave you the courtesy of 10 extra seconds. You broke that courtesy. If you cannot follow town meeting rules, you'll be removed from the meeting. Do you understand? Yes or no? Do you understand? Yes or no? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McKendrick?
Yes, we have a number of people here. I would suggest that maybe we can alternate back and forth with the people in your room and the people in my room. I have one person...
That's a good recommendation. We'll proceed with that.
Hi, Sarah Teague, 250 Walnut Street. In reference to page 16 of the publicly distributed materials, as a matter of decorum, specifically citing the costs associated with supporting children with special needs, an analysis meant to sway voters away from higher costs does not reflect the inclusivity that I expect from this community. I would ask that there be careful consideration given to using classes of people protected under the ADA as a deterrent line item for future public materials.
Further discussion here? The gentleman in the white shirt right here, could you please stand up so the runner can see you?
The presentation we've had is almost the same one that we had from a different developer a little bit further down. David Kulikowski, 17 Monroe. I'm not a neighbor. I'm not in the butter. But it's what do you want for your town? Everyone here has the same vote. How do you want your town to look like? This is a pretty dense development, even 56 units. Say you have three people in each one. Let's say it's over 150 people. Okay? 150, probably three cars. People are still working. I worked at 55, my wife, both my kids, and they were over 18. Okay? So it doesn't mean, simply because it's a two-bedroom, that you're going to have it. We only use two of our three bedrooms. Okay? And I have two kids. Versus if you have a single family, you're talking maybe four, five kids. So five times 15, 75 people. How can 75 people use more water than 156 people? Okay? I mean, that's just simple economics. I'm lucky. I'm lucky I'm in the South Linfield Water District, or Linfield Water District. I don't have to worry about water, but I have friends who lived actually on Upper Main, and it's a tough area. And I would say this, that I would really wonder whether you can even develop 15 houses on that lot. Don't forget, in order to get your mortgage, and I remember this clearly when I bought my house almost 40 years ago now, 39 to be exact, I had to tell them how far I was from the nearest fire hydrant. And that has a bearing on what you pay for an insurance. I'm not even sure if you built 15 homes, if you could build 15 homes. They may not be insurable. And that's a question. So anyone doing it, even on single-family homes, may have to provide water in order to do those. It's clear there's a big problem with water in the Center Water District. The Linfield Water District where I live accounts for 40%, but it's mainly a lot of it because of Market Street. It used to be 25%. Market Street's at 15. So these are considerations. I mean, zoning is done for the benefit, for the good of the town. How can 150 cars a day be less intrusive than 75 cars or 80 cars or 100? I mean, come on. Let's be serious here. And the whole big, you know, worst-case scenario, every developer gives you the worst case. Well, we could get schoolchildren in. The birth rate's 1.9 children now for the average marriage. Nobody has three, four, five, six kids anymore. Can't afford it. I urge you to vote no.
Mr. McKendrick?
Andrew Pacello, 3 Ashley Court. I've heard several comments from the proponents of this bill, as well as our own Finance Committee and Selectmen, that to me indicate a real bias against adding children to town, all based exclusively on financial rationale. I think that perspective is a very sad commentary on our town and perhaps humankind. And since these children are not here tonight to advocate or speak for themselves, I, as a parent, feel compelled to stand up here and speak for them and say that I, for one, welcome children and the next generation to live and to thrive and to learn in Linfield. And... thank you. To me, this decision is not exclusively a financial one. It's about quality of life, and I don't personally think adding 60 more units to town adds to that quality. I far prefer 15 homes and 15 families. For that reason... thank you. For that reason, I'm voting against this article and encourage you all to do the same.
Thank you for your courteous comment. Mr. Pressberry? Could you please stand so the runner can see you?
Bob Pressberry, 6 Charing Cross. I'm a senior citizen, and there are a lot of senior citizens in this town, and I'm thinking of leaving this town because I'm on a fixed income, and I'm not sure I can afford to live here. I think there's a lot of people that feel the same way. We voted a while ago when Mr. Chambers wanted to put a parking lot in. We voted against it. And now we have Linfield Commons. Think about it. I urge you to vote for this project.
Mr. McKendrick, is there anyone who would like to speak in the gymnasium?
Hi, my name is Sherri Madison-Angeloani. I'm at 4 Norris Road. I've lived in Linfield all of my life, and Linfield has been about homes. That's what it's about. I have to say that I do not agree with the traffic study because the traffic study that was done based off many years ago is not based off of what the future will be. If, for those that do not know, in Middleton, they will be developing condo units down near Teresa's, and you can all imagine that those people will also be headed up on Main Street along with the 56 units. And let's talk about 56 units for a moment. You cannot tell me that 15 houses is going to cause more traffic on Main Street or equal traffic to 56 units. The math just doesn't work. In addition to that, I would ask the developer, where I live, I drink well water. I've heard studies that we will be running out of water at some point in time, and I would propose where you're getting your water is the same well water from the same table of well water that I already have problems with. So thank you for inviting another 56 units to share off of our water supply. And my third point and last point is, you say that this is going to have an impact on the school system. 15 houses, of which Linfield is about homes. People who are downsizing and leaving their homes are going to be replaced with families who have children, and that is going to be, as they said earlier, maybe 10, 12 homes. Do the math, guys. It's the same thing, impact-wise. We are about children. We're about homes and community. Thank you.
The woman in the black shirt?
Mary Mahoney, West Happley Road. I have several concerns about this project. The first one is the water. My water is really bad, has been for over 12 years. We've been working with the Water District, and we're hoping to get that solved. But Sherri said, there is a proposal in North Reading, near the Thompson Club, that will put condos there. That water would also be filtered through a septic system going into the Ipswich River, which from then we draw our water. This would only further exacerbate the issue of septic leakage into the Ipswich River watershed and would further contaminate our water. That's the first thing. As far over... we've lived in Linfield for 42 years, so I've seen many changes. I worked well beyond age 55, and I know many people where I worked were also working into their 60s or 70s. That doesn't mean that people in this over 55 community are not going to be working. Another thing that I have to speak about is the roadway itself. Upper Main Street is very steep, several curves, and multiple hills. I drive on that at least five or six times a week at different times of the day, and I have always seen cars trying to go beyond the speed limit. They want to go 60 miles an hour when the speed limit is 30, 35, and even less in some places. They don't even slow down when they come into Sagamore, and I always try to make sure I do that. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the sightline, which has been addressed in the material that the developer gave us. My husband was a police officer, and he was injured severely in a couple of accidents where he had stopped on a state road that had a very straight sightline with no curves and no hills by being hit by a person driving along that same road and smashing into his cruiser. The thought of something like that happening with Chief Breen and his police officers, who do a fabulous job in this town, really scares me because there are too many people driving that road that don't realize how dangerous it can be if they think they're in a car with, you know, "I'm in a big SUV. I have a truck. I can do whatever I want, and nothing's going to happen to me." But it can happen, and it will happen with more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. McKendrick, is there anyone who would like to speak in there?
Yes. Deborah Di Mattei, 2 Kimberly Terrace. I'm not a neighbor up in that area, but I'm here to oppose this article. I think that we all need to think about the neighbors in that area. They paid a premium to live there. They paid a premium to live in this town, and it's completely unfair now to change the zoning on them when they thought they were moving into a residential, single-family zone. Going off my script a little bit here, a lot of people tonight talked about the safety, the traffic. You are never going to win an argument in Massachusetts. It would never hold up in court. It doesn't matter how many people die on that road once you give up the zoning that's there now. If you accept rezoning, you have given up all control of the aesthetic of this town. The Board of Selectmen, they made a good argument for 15 houses versus 60 elderly units. Personally, with all the water and all the meetings that I go to about the dirty water in town and the lack of water pressure, I don't think they'll get 15 houses in there. So my argument is, if you don't want your neighborhood rezoned someday, don't do it to the neighbors on Main Street.
Thank you for your comment. Mrs. Harden? Runner's back in the red.
Harden, 1066 Main Street. I make a motion to move to vote.
There's been a motion to move the question to proceed to a vote on Article 16. This requires a two-thirds vote to end debate. So if you want to end debate, you'll vote yes. If you want to keep debating, you'll vote no. Jessica, can we put that up on the screen? Voting is now open to proceed to vote on Article 16. Voting is now open to proceed to vote on Article 16. The motion carries. Yes is have it. We'll proceed to a vote on Article 16. Ms. LaCourts? It's a two-thirds vote. We well exceeded it. We're going to move to a vote on Article 16, that the town vote to amend the existing zoning map of the town of Linfield, Massachusetts, December 1953. Together with all duly adopted amendments and revisions thereto, is filed in the office of the town clerk so that the following-described parcel located at and behind 1414 Main Street, Linfield, Essex County, Massachusetts, being shown on the access map eight as Lot 1325, 1488, and 2113 to be rezoned from the Residence D zoning district to the Elderly Housing District, as listed in the warrant. Polling is now open. This requires a two-thirds vote to pass. The noes have it.
Mr. Moderator, could I just make a comment for the people here?
Mr. McKendrick, one second. Before everyone leaves, I just ask that you please return your clickers and don't take them home. Mr. McKendr...
That's exactly what I was going to ask the people to do, is return their clickers and don't take them home.
The power is in the moderator to reconsider. I'm not going to reconsider the motion. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask you to just stay. We have 10 more minutes. I promise you, we have one more article. If you just stay so we can finish the business of the town, I'd really appreciate it. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 22F, which allows local boards and officers to set fees for licenses, permits, certificates, or services, or to take any other action in connection where they are with Mr. Dalton.
I moved that the town vote to... voted to vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 22F, which allows local boards and officers to set fees for licenses, permits, certificates, or services.
Article 17 has been moved and seconded that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 22F, which allows local boards and officers to set fees for licenses, permits, certificates, or services. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen and explanation? The Board of Selectmen recommends Article 17.
The explanation is that currently, town meeting has the right to set fees, permits, license certificates, and services. We're asking that the... which only happens, as you know, two times a year. Department heads who evaluate fees throughout the area are asking that these fees be set monthly if necessary by the Board of Selectmen after public hearing, after public review.
Recommendation from Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does not recommend passage of Article 17.
Is there an explanation?
At a meeting earlier this evening, the majority of the board felt that the power for licensing fees should remain with the town meeting population. Yep, sorry. At a meeting earlier tonight, we recommended not to pass the article. Majority of the board felt that it should remain with the town meeting body to set the fees.
Just as a point of order in the last article, I did not... I'm not considering motions to reconsider because I don't know whether people are on the prevailing or non-pervailing side, because it's essentially, you don't know about it. And I believe as a personal item is that reconsideration is a dishonest motion. People leave, and then you revote on an article, and it's not fair. So we'll just... So we'll proceed to discussion on Article 17. Hearing and seeing none? Mr. Dalton has moved that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 22F, which allows local boards and officers to set fees for licenses, permits, certificates, or services. The motion fails on Article 17. Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn. Sign I die.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me tonight. I appreciate it.